We're going to go ahead and get started. If you please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Happy holidays. Nice to see everybody here this evening. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. For dialogue? I'm going to start with Jane first.
This is an evening for Diane, for Diana Dawson, and tissues. This is, this is truly, truly, I'm trying to think of the right word. I used this word today with Diana and she said, "Not really." But it's, it's bittersweet. It's a bitter feeling because she's not going to be with us working here anymore. And I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm almost positive that she's going to be missed tremendously. She knows more about this school district than any other person in the district. Sorry, everybody. She does. She has more knowledge, more information, everything possible she knows about the district. And while I'm sure we will find or have a wonderful person to fill her shoes, and I'm sure that she will obtain the same amount of knowledge, she will acquire all of those things, but we're really going to miss Diana. And that is no reflection on her replacement because she will step into the shoes and fill them. But it's sweet for Diana. It's bitter for us, but it's sweet for her. Now, every day of the week is Saturday except for Sunday. And she can quilt, and she can do whatever she does, embroider, and she can make things for people if you pay her to. And I'm just truly going to miss her. Diana, you know I love you, chick. And you know I'm going to miss you. I just hope Janet can put up with my annoyances. Thank you for all of your years. Thank you so much. And here is a gift from us. And here's a hug from me.
And here's a massage from us. I won't try to, I hurt you. I help people after injury. I don't create.
No, are you kidding me? Okay. What is it?
This, this tastes really good. This tastes really good. And I'm going to make these brief and simple because you still have a day to kill me tomorrow if I don't. So on behalf of the entire school district staff, we wanted to give you this awesome hand. Thank you very much. Share.
She would come back.
This time, Ms. Owen, you want to come up for the featured staff member?
Do you want to open it for everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Diana, you get to open. I told Diana earlier, I watched my, it was my wedding anniversary yesterday, 13 years, and watching the wedding video and Diana was there and she hasn't changed a bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Great thing. That was from the board. That's from the staff. Thank you to everybody, whoever. Thank you. It's been an awesome place to work.
That should go in the notes. Awesome place to work.
Thanks, Diana. All right, Ms. Owen. Featured staff member.
Johnny Barrett has been employed with the district for over 15 years. If you haven't seen him around the district, you probably haven't been in the district very long. Johnny's called on a wide, he did call on the wide variety of jobs. It used to be mowed or bagged or trammed, Johnny's called over there. If someone had a leak blower that won't start, or push mower, or the bent blade, or floor gopher that suddenly starts leaking oil, Johnny will get called. If you have old computers, furniture, portable bleachers, band equipment, pretty much anything that needs to be moved, Johnny will be there. If you need bookcases built, shelves put up, storage building built, Johnny can do it. If you need a substitute bus driver at 2:30 in the afternoon, 6:00 in the morning, Johnny will get called. Probably his least favorite job is driving the old red dump truck. Unfortunately, he's about the only one that knows all of the tricks. Whatever it may be, Johnny is willing to tackle any challenge he is faced with at that point. And I value his insight, his human integrity, and maybe most of all, I value his knowledge of where things are put. Johnny has been an important asset to the district for many years. I hope he'll be here for many, many more.
You're in place.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thanks.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Are there anybody for student voices here tonight? Any student voices? Okay. Don't believe we had any letters going around tonight, did we, Diana? No letters. CTA.
Since our last meeting, we've completed our first district-wide backpack program. With the help of the organizations such as Ministerial Alliance, the Meadow Heights Mission Teams, St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry, along with teachers, administrators, staff members, kids, and parents, we manage together, together, and distribute roughly 200 backpacks to needy kids to make the season a little brighter. Everyone pitched in at every building to make this successful, and we hope it is the start of something good for many years to come. Thank you. Marmington CTA.
Diane, can you get the notes off of it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just give it there. Thank you.
I think we also have Ms. Wooton here from Roosevelt.
And Ms. Lilly, she's joining me. On behalf of Roosevelt Elementary, we would like to thank each of you for your vision and values that helped shape the education of our district. Your leadership helped make it possible for us to receive the National Blue Ribbon School Honor. The candles in front of you signify the paths that you light for each of us at Roosevelt, and I thank you for that. There should also be a quote in front of you, and it reads, "Each of us has great cause to thank with great gratitude of those who have lighted the flame within us." And we wanted to show everyone this tonight before we hung it in our building.
Congratulations.
Roosevelt's had a wonderful Blue Ribbon Assembly.
Yes.
And it was great to be a part of it. And so congratulations to the staff and all the students at Roosevelt. A lot of hard work. Superintendent's report.
It's been a wonderful month of celebration and recognition, and one with a lot of business as well. And so I'd like to ask Sarah Long to provide us with a brief report of a couple of other things we need to know about.
Just a couple of final questions. One, we were fortunate to receive an after-school reading grant for Lincoln Elementary. It's $2,000, and the MP and RCT are planning to buy some e-readers for students who might have some difficulty with reading. And we're also going to be subscribing to a service that will allow us downloadable books for a single fee, so we can put them on NP3 players and e-readers to kind of introduce that technology to five and six, particularly for kids who might be struggling with literacy issues. So we're excited to have that. It runs from right now through the end of May. We have to expend the funds by the end of May. Second thing I wanted to mention is we do have a survey for each of you from the architectural firm that we're working with that we'll ask you to fill out, and I can send it to you via email as well, so we'll get that to you. And then the final piece about the architects who are now working with the district, they've been in the district several days already, meeting with staff and different groups, and they are planning to have some projects ready for immediate bid. I think Jim can give you a little more insight as to which projects they're working on, so we'll be ready to go immediately on some of them.
Focus mostly on the roofs and air condition, HVAC equipment that is going to have to be replaced regardless of the bond issue or not. And they will be working on getting specs and everything in place for that. So whichever way we go, we'll be ready.
And then I just have two things. I want to remind the board, on January 2nd, our first day back after winter break, we will have an all-staff meeting that we want to invite you to at the Sun Team Center. The formal start time is 7:45, but the extra presentation will begin at 8:00, so that's why we have 7:45. We'll begin with a financial update for all of the staff, and then we'll see the beginnings of the design, work that the architects have done, along with some drawings that will be available in the lobby for people to comment on. And we should have people back into their buildings by 9:30.
I think programs are going to start at 10:00. So they can look back exiting the Centene around 9:30.
So I want to make sure that you know you're welcome. We also talked several weeks ago about tours, and I will be emailing you optional tour times. Some of you were disappointed that you didn't get to climb on the roofs when we did the tour. Ben Davis, I know you were worried about that. Actually, I think that Roethlisberger was worried about it.
Probably.
But there were, we divided all of that. We've got some optional times for you to get individualized tours of kitchens and roofs and all of that kinds of things that you want to climb into and look down and up and all around. So I'll send it to you, and you can just let us know if those times work, and if not, we'll arrange those.
Thank you. This time, I'd like Ms. Eaton to present the 2010-11 Annual Audit Report.
Well, introducing this audit report, and this being Diana's night, takes me back a long way because she and I have a history that goes back prior to me actually working here when I was an annoying young auditor. And she was, I want food service, I think. And so it's, yeah. And of course Diana's done, then I talked to her, I think at one point, into being my accounts payable person, and she put up with me through that. So we're going to miss you, Diana. We're happy for you. We have an annual audit performed by an independent CPA firm, and you know, the state, the school runs on local, state, and federal dollars, and so it's not a surprise that we have oversight at each of those levels. The school board actually provides a local oversight, represents the community that we serve. Obviously, the DESI provides a state oversight and monitors just about everything we do. And in addition to that, we have oversight from the federal government, and that's where the independent auditors come in with a lot of federal compliance work and look at internal controls. And I would say that the last two years have been especially challenging with the ERA funds from the federal government. Certainly beneficial, but I don't recall ever seeing money with so many strings attached and so many specific audit requirements, and it made, I think, the work of the auditors as well as our work a little more difficult, but I think we got through it. So you know, with that being said, the auditors do, do look at more than just financial. There's a lot of internal control work and compliance, and I'll let Matthew talk about that. Matt, come on up. Matthew Norid is with Daniel Jones &amp; Associates. I want to thank them for their guidance on, on some things with the ERA funds over the last couple of years, and also this year. He provided some guidance to me in preparing the policy that the board adopted in June with respect to the new governmental accounting standards, Board Number 54, regarding fund balances. So I appreciate that. But Matthew is here to discuss the audit report, and feel free to ask him any questions.
My name is Matt Norid. I'm with Daniel Jones &amp; Associates. I'm a senior staff member with the, with the, with the firm. I was also lead auditor on the audit of the district this year. As part of our audit, because you all expend more than $500,000 a year, we actually give three opinions instead of where we do a financial audit for a school district, we would give two opinions. Those opinions are we give an opinion on the financial statements, state compliance, and federal programs. And all three of those, we get issued unqualified opinions. Basically, what that means to, get it in a general term, it's like getting an A on a report card. We didn't have any findings. That includes findings on state compliance and financial statements and federal awards because all of those are listed separately if you would get any of those comments. Again, that's like getting an A on a report card. So the difference would be if you had a qualified opinion, you would be like getting a D. So it's either an A with some findings or no findings, which you all had, or it gets pretty bad from there. That's not what happened. We also issued a letter on internal controls. We didn't note it. We, we don't issue an opinion on internal controls, but as part of our testing, we have to understand the internal controls of the district. Otherwise, we can't test those internal controls. In that letter, we note that we didn't have any significant deficiencies in internal controls, and we also didn't have any issues that were considered to be material weaknesses. And that's the reason why you all have an unqualified opinion, means we didn't have any limitations to our ability to test any of those financial, state, or federal testing that we perform for the district. Also, with the district, you all, you're considered to be a low-risk entity this year, which means that for the last two years with federal programs, you didn't have any federal findings. You didn't have any significant deficiencies with regards to any of your federal programs that were tested. That includes the ERA funds, that includes, which Don had spoken about earlier, which is your stimulus funding, and that also includes any of the other programs we tested. This year, we tested the Title I cluster, the Ed Jobs Funds, which is a stabilization fund, and the stabilization cluster, which was supplementing your basic formula and the special education clusters. Do you all have any questions regarding the audit? Kind of go over fairly quickly, so.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like Ms. Stinkler to come up and talk about the health services report and program review.
Okay. I'm here today to talk about our health services, which consist of seven RNs located throughout the school. We have an RN in every building except for WL Johns. I service both kindergarten and WL Johns. In the report, I listed, one of the reasons I listed the medical conditions that we have in our building, so you know what students have in our district and why it's so important that we continue having an RN in every building. And to be real honest with you, if I probably looked at all of them, I may not even know what all those are, but the nurses that have those in the buildings are familiar with that and what's the medical needs of those students. There's just a lot of different ones there. We currently, this year, our focus has been in the health services, has been on 504 plans, learning more about those, implementing those. We've been working in our PD days, working on our individual healthcare plans. We have always been very good at implementing services to children. We haven't always been so good at putting them in a written form, so we've, we've been working on that in our PD days to be more efficient in that area. We are in the process with administration's help, looking at possibility of doing some standard, standing orders, which means we have a physician that will underwrite the orders for us, allowing us to be able to administer Tylenol or Motrin for headaches during the school days without having to have an individualized order for that particular student, also allowing us to be able to use some ointments and different things that legally, as a nurse, we have to have an order to do that. So we're working with the district, working on policies, so you should be seeing that come through in the near future, some changes in our, in our medication policy in those regards. That's about it. Any questions or concerns?
I just have one small question. When you talk about ointments and lotions and things, does that include antibiotic lotions, triple antibiotics?
Right now, we don't use any.
Okay. Not even Calamine or anything like that?
Well, we're not supposed to, but I won't say that we don't have a rule, a Gula gel in our drawer when kids got bites that are really itching or poison ivy. But legally, we're really supposed to have orders to cover us for, just like in the hospital to give Tylenol at the hospital. You have to have a physician order to do that. So that's why we're working in the district to get those areas, gray areas, covered for legally that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Good. Thank you.
Kind of along those same lines, Laura, would you like to talk about policy JHCD that's being placed on 30-day review?
Actually, I think Laura Stinkler should have a very nice job of overviewing that, but for essentially the same reasons she talked about. We do want to make sure that we have a provision in place to have certain medications. We're not talking about a lot, but very basic medications, over-the-counter, things we don't really even think of as medications sometimes, available to our nurses to use. The purpose of that is to make sure that we keep kids in school who really can be in school, but who may not be comfortable without some of that additional help. And having a physician prescribe those orders upfront at the beginning of each year will allow us to do that. And of course, there will be a sign-off each year for families, parents to sign off, authorizing the nurse as well to give that medication. Still have to have parent permission, but it can be done upfront, and then parents will be notified each time. Any questions?
I'm going to comment because we had a question or request from some students, so I'm going to highlight a little bit about what the policy process is. When, when a school district gets ready to look at a new policy, and you, I gave you a copy of the policy that we were just talking about, if you look at our agenda, you'll see it's in the discussion section. So what happens is, this is the month for the board to hear about it for the first time, and for people who have comments to be able to suggest comments and to make comments, but the board's not voting on it at this point. They would have this item come up next month as an action item. I'm going to give you just a couple highlights about, the real reason this, this item came up was a parent requested it. And that's one of the things that we try to do at the school district. A parent calls at the beginning of the year and asked us to take a look at this because they had to leave work to come and bring Tylenol to their child, and it was creating a situation for them that they thought was somewhat problematic, and they asked us to consider it. So I think this is a good example of our staff listening to the issue of a parent, going back and talking about an issue, and taking that through to a possible policy change so that the school district can be responsive. A couple of areas of controversy when you look at a policy are some things that you would need to think about, and they're in the piece that you have, or what are the financial ramifications? If this policy is voted on, there will be small expenditures that the board will have to approve so that we can stock those medications at the school. Because you don't want people to send bottles and you don't know what's in it, so if we decide that we're going to provide an antibiotic ointment, or we, we decide that we're going to provide Tylenol, the school is going to have to, the board's going to have to approve the money to make those items available. We also would need to make sure that we had a medical personnel to provide training and to oversee which medications and to make sure that they're safe. So we're actually providing some additional services. Flip side of it is that it does allow us to respond to what students need. Parents wouldn't have to take off work. They wouldn't be tempted to take their children home at the end of that time because they wouldn't be able to do that. And we're thinking that it would be a good thing for both the students and the parents. But this is an example of a policy process that's going on, and it might be interesting for you to watch what happens next month when it moves to an action item and the board actually votes. Is that what you all needed? Okay.
Is the current prohibition because of one of our policies, or is it because of a state-level policy?
It's our policy. MSBA has worked with us on putting this in place. It is our prohibition. And it isn't that we can't, the nurse can give it, but we have to have a prescription from the doctor each, for each particular student. And sometimes if that comes, a prescription for Tylenol in the middle of the day, it's, it is, and then you also have to have the parent written permission. So this kind of lets us do that work upfront.
With our current policy now, is a student allowed to take Tylenol, keep it on them, their person, and take it to?
So, yeah. Our current policy, if we have the written order physician allowing them to self-medicate, they are allowed to, but all the paperwork has to be in the office, and the nurses, like the older age, and the younger kids, we would not allow that. But the older kids, like the middle school and high school kids, they, at the beginning of the year, if the parent fill out the top part, physician bill, they can carry that, just like their inhalers, their EpiPens are, they're allowed to.
But if that paperwork's not?
If the paperwork's not, they're not, they're not allowed to do that. And that's usually what happens, and kids get trouble because they're taking the Tylenol they have in their purse because they're old enough to do that.
I know this would help, I know the coaches a lot of times, too. They, their athletes will come to them and say, "This is a good idea. It's a good plan."
Very good. Action items, letter C and letter I have been pulled, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve items B, D, E, F, G, and H. I have a motion by Mr. Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action item C, approval of December bills. I would entertain a motion to pay all bills with the exception of the bills to Sines, et cetera, and Farmington's Fortunery have?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This time, I entertain a motion to pay the bills to Sines, et cetera.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Hahn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bates. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Absention? And?
If the paperwork's not, they're not, they're not allowed to do that. And that's usually what happens, and kids get in trouble because they're taking the Tylenol they have in the purse because they're old enough to do that.
I know this would help, I know the coaches a lot of times, too. They, their athletes will come to them and say, "This is a good idea. It's a good plan."
Very good. Action items, letter C and letter I have been pulled. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve items B, D, E, F, G, and H. Have a motion by Mr. Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action item C, approval of December bills. I would entertain a motion to pay all bills with the exception of the bills to signs, et cetera, and Farmington's Fortune Rehab.
Some move.
Have a motion by Ms. Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This time, I entertain a motion to pay the bills to signs, et cetera.
Some move.
Have a motion by Ms. Hahn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bates. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstention? And this time, I entertain a motion to pay the bill to Farmington's Fortune Rehab. Make the motion. Motion by Mr. Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hahn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? And I will abstain. Action item I has been pulled. No more discussion. At this point, let's have a motion on the table, and then we'll have discussion after the motion. I would approve, or entertain a motion for the approval of the District Community Committee recommendation to place a no-tax increased bond issue on the April 2012 ballot. Make the motion. Motion by Mr. Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bates. And now, we can have a discussion.
Do we know specifically, I know we've talked about what we need, what we, a second went on, and what we're wishing for, do we know where we are in that process for sure?
Yes.
What we're going to, so can I, can you help me out here?
Sure.
And talk about how, what we're going to ask for, and?
What's going to be included in the proposal in January will be all of the renovations and repairs that were considered number-one priority, were additional classroom space, which was considered a number-one priority, which includes a gymnasium, the additional science labs, which are requiring us to have music, and band facility at the high school, and additional classroom space at early childhood, moving to the Truman campus. So, all the renovation, oh, and the buses that are involved, the technology and the safety and security pieces. So, essentially, all of the red items that were there, along with the additional classroom space.
So, we're going for the whole in July?
We are. Because what happened from the very beginning until we got the additional information with the demographic study was the additional classroom space and the music. When we first started long ago, we did not have the numbers for the classroom space, and that's when we added the gymnasium and the early childhood.
Okay. So, are, and this is the work on W L Johns. W L Johns would become what's currently a home base.
Mm-hmm. And you will also be seeing a design, what's most probably going to be in the design, is what's currently home base would become the new shop for the district, because the shop will have to disappear when the additional gymnasium goes up. And a new structure for the early childhood will be behind. And that will be in the preliminary designs on January 2nd. I haven't seen them yet, but that's what's being.
My question is, if this is approved, we put this on the ballot, there are going, are there going to be a substantial amount of meetings that people can attend and possibly get from this and drawings, just so that they can't say, "Well, we don't know what it's about"?
Right.
Inform them. Make sure that everyone's, can make an informed decision.
This is a two-step approval process. Tonight, we're asking for your approval and support of a community recommendation. There'd be another item on the agenda, January 17th, with the amount in the bond language. On January 2nd, the very preliminary drawings are going to be there for people to provide additional information. After that, there will be a work session before the January 17th for the board and the public would be open. Once a final decision is made by the board, then there would be meetings, building by building, in terms of the list of what's going on. But until we have that decision, it's not a good idea to be promising people in terms of the work. And so, that's why no additional activities have happened. There's been a tremendous amount of work up until this point in terms of the needs assessment, prioritizing, estimates, all kinds of work has gone into it. But until the board makes a decision to do that, we do not want to go to the point of having mock drawings up for people and the public and going down that road. There's been so much engagement at this point. Most people think you've already voted to do it because there's been so much opportunity for people to participate in every step of the decision, so much opportunity to participate in the needs assessments. We have over seventeen pages of feedback that staff have provided in the most recent activity with the architects walking through, making their time available to everybody. And this was in addition to all the work that went on before. So, it's been an incredibly engaging process at this point in time, and will continue to be.
Well, that was my only concern. I don't think anyone doubts the need. I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone doubts the need. I just want to make sure that everyone is informed so that they can, you know, and this is not a vote yes campaign. This is just to make sure you vote, make sure you're informed and make an informed decision.
We're not planning informing a separate committee to raise funds to campaign. We would do it as an information campaign. We certainly would have activities and structures. But one piece of information only is, if you look at the ceiling tiles that are right here.
I saw that. That water.
It's really a good example, because this particular ceiling is somewhat of an indication of what the roof is not exactly. It looks better than three-fourths of the roofs in the schools. There was wet, there was actual water puddled in both of those areas earlier this week. And for us to continue to have roofs that we have to have buckets for kids, air conditioning and heating units, that we're having severe problems with, touch pointing problems, the buses, the classroom space that's limited, we really owe it to our students to be able to move forward in this process. And we're also confident that a successful bond issue will position us very well for what our minimal needs will be for 10 years out. We will have capacity to bond again in 2016, should we choose to, but we will have taken care of the demographic problems by then. And we will also have taken care of the basic structural kinds of problems, maintenance that needed to happen.
Mr. Eaton, would you like to summarize? I know you kind of spearheaded that committee, the community.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the focus at that time, because that was late September, early October, early October, I believe, was more on just the presentation of the needs. And as I expressed to the board earlier, the people that attended, I think, there wasn't really any disputing in the needs. As far as a lot of the details, that was just not there. But I think every, you know, the things that Dr. Thomas has mentioned were discussed in general terms. And subsequent to the meetings, we basically tried to communicate with all of the people that had been invited. So, even if they weren't able to attend, basically, I think the sheet that you may have, a summary of our meetings was sent, and did not receive a whole lot of feedback, certainly no negative feedback. And I think the conclusion of that group was that we need to move forward somehow.
I think there was also some discussion about how much to move forward, and there was a, you want to talk about?
Well, the amount that we talked about was based on Mr. Hart's projections, based on the 90 cent levy that, where we're at right now. And he anticipated that we could go as much as 17 million. No one in the group seemed to have a problem with that. In other words, that, if you go higher than that, we probably would be looking at having to raise the levy. But he felt that we, at that 90 cent level, could possibly go as much as 17 million. And if that were successful, fit those payments into a format and schedule that we could still operate under that nice.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was, we have bonding capacity up to 23 million, but it would extend the time before we could bond again. And that it was up to 17 million that we would be able to go for 2016.
Right. Based on those numbers and his projections, which we, I think we were pretty, pretty bare in those projections. I think we actually zero percent growth for a couple of years, pretty conservative.
For the next four years, yeah.
Still feels that we could do that and not, and not handstream the districts about 10 years. You know, we could look at another five years and still have some volume. You know, obviously, if the economy picks up and things go better, then that, the whole scenario becomes better. But as I explained to the committee group, as well as a couple of faculty groups that I talked to, the 90 cent levy really was driven by our current payment schedule. You know, we had, we had payment schedules that are increasing, I think, a half million dollars from this fiscal to next. So, we were going to have to address that anyway. But, and the only other, the only other concern, there was discussion about the fact, computer equipment, for instance, some technology equipment and buses being shorter-term assets. And I think that can be addressed through Mr. Hart, possibly, you know, scheduling some early principal payments. I think we can, I think we have a lot of flexibility about how we structure those payments, and that can be addressed through that. So, you know, to summarize, you pretty much have that there. We basically tried to get as much feedback as we could, even though the meetings weren't as well-attended as I would like. I thought it was really a quality discussion. We did reach out to the group afterwards. So, if the assumption is no news is good news, I think we're good to go. Usually, when people have a problem with something, they tell me. I didn't have a lot of that.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton.
Do we know, do we know any other issues on the ballot?
Board election is all we know about right now.
I don't believe the city has any issues, and they're done with theirs.
I should, I should also say that I have met with city administrator, and also had communication with the mayor. They've not only been supportive, but they're starting to talk to us about some long-range facility planning, looking at what we're proposing with the bond issue, along with what they're planning to do with the funds that they realized from their last debt levy. Been sharing information, and it really encourages us to not only work with this bond issue, but to really develop a long-term capital improvement plan with multiple phases that might be able to, that would be able to be changed, or to even look past this upcoming process forward. And it's gratifying to have that kind of partnership and support from the city.
And knowing that we have additional classroom space, and we do grow, that the bond issue is just one part, and we would have had to have tax levy money actually to fund those additional teachers and staff. I mean, and that's just the nature of the beast.
Correct.
If we do grow. I mean, we're looking for passing the bond issue to take care of some facilities, but when you do that and you grow, you're going to need extra money to the teachers' classrooms, clean classrooms.
If I, if I may, David, one comment about the amount. I think the committee really didn't see any problem with us getting as much funding as was available because, and I think Mr. Harrington probably vouched for this, you know, when you start projects of this scope, you're looking at probably three to three and a half years on some things, possibly. I know we did with the last issue. A lot of things can change in three years. So, to, to ask for less than what's reasonable and feasible, I mean, if you, if you believe the assumptions that this, the current levy can pay for X number of dollars, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to ask for substantially less. You know, I mean, because when you do go out there, and as has been proven, some of you have been on the board before, and as I mentioned earlier, over the last two years, we had refinanced bonds six times. So, there's always the availability of obtaining lower rates and reducing those payment schedules in the future. It's just like a home loan. But I don't think the committee saw any problem with that necessarily. I think, because, you know, the levy is there to support our current payments. So, why not, and if there's a need for the entire amount, I think that's what they, what they saw.
Thank you, sir.
So, the minutes they approve a report, but really, we're just accepting that report?
You're affirming the recommendation, and you'll vote again for the bond language. We need to make a decision if we're moving forward. We need, we need to know that we're investing money. The actual bond language would be the next vote in January.
Well, I think where I am, I've thought about this a lot, and especially with people in the community that are struggling. You know, we talked about how economically this is not the best time, but it ends up to being, okay, this is what I decided. Okay, I'm going to do my duty for the school, and then I'm going to let the voters decide because it's ultimately their decision. And that's the way I feel about it.
And, yeah, and I agree with you. I think you hit the nail on the head there. You know, it's, it's our duty up here to do what's right for the district, to be responsible for the district. And I think by, I know times are tough. I know there are a lot of questions, a lot of ifs, but I feel like we need to proceed with it. It's pretty simple to me. You know, we're all here for the students, for the kids, and this is to create a safe environment for the kids, a comfortable learning environment for the kids, and really to give them the tools that they need to be competitive in their lives after school. So, you know, the district's behind in some of that stuff. We all know that. We've got computers that are 15 years older, or older. I don't think, probably nobody in here has one in their house that old, maybe not. I don't know. But, you know, it's just something that has to be done, whether or not, you know, I hope that the public supports it. But, you know, at this point, that really can't be our concern. We've got to do what's right for the district. That's why we're up here. That's what we signed on for. So, I definitely agree with you.
That's what I was talking about, is making sure that everyone's informed of the necessity, making sure that everybody knows that that's it. And I think it's their decision, and they can't have a part of that decision if we don't give them an opportunity. So.
I want to assure you that part of the strategy that we've been using so far in this process is to model an open, transparent policy and approach. In every step of the way, we've engaged staff, and we've provided all the information that we have, and we've encouraged feedback. And what, what we've said to people is, we want you to have enough information to answer people's questions. And in order to do that, you need a lot of information. And that's why information has been posted on the website. It's been reviewed with people. It's been generated in many cases by staff, and it will continue to be there. Because this is a, this is a bond issue for everyone in the district. It's not just for the board. But everybody's going to have to have a stake in doing this, and they're highly engaged in the design of it right now. They were highly engaged in identifying the needs to begin with. And I think that they will be highly engaged in us moving forward in whatever way you decide.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'm going to motion, we go into closed session pursuant to personnel and the items listed under executive session, 610.021, paragraph 313.
Have a motion by Ms. Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis, Janet, or Diana?
First.
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. We have plenty of snacks. Please enjoy the holiday season.
Merry Christmas.